Good morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iowa Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams is advocate today. Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
William, Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Shane Ellison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we do give thanks for the beautiful day that you presented us with. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this wonderful city. Thank you for all the people here today in attendance and those watching at home and for the opportunity to serve Gadsden. Just pray for this group of men and women here today. Lord, please always give us wisdom to do what's best for our community and what's pleasing in your sight. And again, we just thank you for the opportunity to meet in peace and freedom today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held October the 22nd.
It's on move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of October the 18th through the 24th.
It's on move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation.
No.
Unfinished business, we have none. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1604 Harlem Avenue in District One, Yulitha Torrent Sims with the life estate to Janice Sims being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? If you'll come to the podium, please, and give your name and address.
My name is Yulitha Torrent Sims. I live in 5135 Gold Leaf Lane. That's in Pinson, Alabama. And I'm the state owner of the property, 1604 Harlem Avenue. I've begun work on it. Unfortunately, of course, it's quite a bit. Had family members that stayed in it and some things went down that were unexpected, which when they went down, they tore up the house and everything, meaning some things were seized. So it was more damage to it than normal. So I've been working on it bit by bit since I live in Birmingham and I travel extensively. It's been kind of hard for me to get things done and you just can't trust anybody doing the work these days. So I've just been working on it piece by piece, fixed some things. Some things still got to be fixed. And obviously, they probably don't have my new address, the one that I have now, so I think that's the reason I haven't been getting the notices. But I am working on it and doing the best I can. I'm the only child and family here is limited. So I don't know what the process is going forward, but I am working on it. I'm trying to keep this house up to date and in the family.
Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in February of this year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Mr. Sims, do you have a problem coming back to the podium for a minute, please? Instead of speaking out there. In looking at the pictures and it says it's been since February and there seems to be a lot of damage to the house. I understand what you're saying, but is it going to be worth you putting that money, putting money in to keep that house up? And how long, from what we're seeing here, how long would it take you to bring it up to standards?
And I've tried to, during the summer months, as many of us know, it's a busy time for contractors. I was trying to get a price quote to see what it was, to bring it up to standards. And of course, most of the people I talked to, they were, they didn't have the time. Their schedules were booked. And I've been reaching out to other people. So I am diligently working on it, talking to people. But as far as the outdoor part of it, I know the porch needs a whole lot of work and things of that nature. And I'm just, my goal is just, I'm trying to keep it up, get it back up to standards for my family, since it's our family home. But I am not sure about the price quote or the cost of it. And since the month of February, we did what we could because, like I said, I travel extensively. So that has been the fallback. I've been gone. And during the spring and summer, I'm gone quite a bit and working quite a bit. So that's been the problem. But I'm working on it right now and trying to even find out the cost of what it would be and if it's feasible. Or is it worth it to do that, do that much work on it? And I'm not sure right now.
In our pre-council meeting, the statement was made that a lot of times, we, you know, give people an opportunity who say that they're going to fix up the house and it ends up that they, that they don't, you know. So what, you know, it's in my, it's in my district and this is what, just looking at this, this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a 30-day extension for you to find out, is it going to be financially feasible for you to bring that up to standards? If not, then when it comes up again, then we will, I will move for it to be abated.
Yes.
But Mr. Harbison, the one who gave the report, the outside is what has, has to, has to look, you know, like you're doing something to it. And so he can give you a checklist of what needs to be done and how it, you know, should be done. But if it comes up again, I'm going to move for it to be abated. So what I'm going to do today is to ask for a 30-day extension and go from there.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I would second it.
Clerk?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
All right. You have 30 days from today.
Do the outside first.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1009 Litchfield Avenue in District Two and this is one, Francisco One Y One, Delores Manual and Impact Properties LLC being the last known owners. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, based on recent improvements in a permit that's been obtained for several weeks, we're going to ask this case to be table for 30 days. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Table it for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 713 Nichols Street in District Two. And this is Steve Salvador, subject to a mortgage in favor of Associated Financial Service Company of Alabama, also known as City Financial Mortgage. Mortgageurs being Benny Blaylockens, wife Stephanie Blaylocken, the state of Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this?
Madam President, also based on recent improvements of this property, we're going to ask this case to be table for 30 days. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
It's on move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1401 Cansler Avenue in District Three. And this is Dorothy Joseph and Mary Sawyer in care of Angela Joseph being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll come to the podium and give your name and your address, please.
Good morning. My name is Angela Joseph and I currently live at 907 Litchfield Avenue. And 1401 is a, 1401 Cansler Avenue, Gadsden, Alabama. It's a family home of my mother. She passed three years ago. My siblings and I have been trying to do a little bit of work here and there to try to do some stuff to bring it up to par. But we received a letter and I'd like to see if we can get some time to knock down the front porch and the back porch and do a little work so that we can keep it. We've been doing work along the way. But financially, me by myself, I can't do it all alone. And I've been trying to get the help of my brothers and my sisters. But I do know I can get the front porch and the back porch knocked down and stairs led up to it.
So it's kind of like the same question I asked the gentleman, you know, financially, is it, is it worth you financially to do all of that?
Well, a friend of my brother's, he talked to my brother a couple of months ago and he was talking about investing money in it. And my sister, my sister who's on a fixed income, we was just gonna put back, because she's having to pay rent somewhere. So within a, within the next six months or so, he said he could probably do some work with us on, like spending like $20,000 in it. But he couldn't, he didn't tell my brother right off. But I know I can get the outside, the, the front porch and back porch taken care of.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
Favor.
Favor, I'm sorry.
Madam President, I have worked with the family over the last couple of years on this property. And as you can tell in the pictures, she described the front and the back of the house are, are the worst. This area is, has been hit economically and the vacancies of so many dwellings, you know, it's, it's just a hard situation for a lot of the property owners. But based on the fact that there have been no improvements, the last building permit was taken out in November two years ago, we are asking for
What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm going to ask to table it for 30 days. To give, you have 30 days to knock all it down, okay? And if not, like, if you come back before us, we're going to abate it, okay? I'm going to ask for 30 days, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution abating nuisance on property at 513 Henderson Street in District Six. And this is the state of Alabama, subject to the right of redemption of Tammy Mansel being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition?
I'm Tammy Mansel.
Okay, if you'll come to the podium and give your name and your address.
I'm nervous. I'm sorry. I'm Tammy Mansel. I can give my address. It's my son's address, 3506 Walnut Street, because that'd be the best place for me to get mail there. So I stay there some, but then I stay with my sister some.
Okay.
So what I need to say now?
Okay, this is concerning the property at 513 Henderson Street.
Okay. I had got the permit, I think in, in July, I think that's when it was. And I mean, I've done, it, it looks, the house is not in bad shape. It's just that family members had kind of jumped it up when I wasn't able to be there. So I was taking care of family members. And there's abandoned cars and things like that. Which I've got all that cleaned up myself. It's just, I'm just doing it myself and I'm disabled. So, but, and it still just has a little bit of outside cleanup to do, but I'm trying to get it.
Well, if you don't mind me asking, what's, what's your long-term plan for the house? Are you, would you like to move back in there?
Yes, please. I need to be there.
All right. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in February. The building permit in question was taken out in June. There have been no visible improvements made to the property. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Ms. Mansel, I will tell you that I've had a tremendous amount of complaints on that piece of property. I don't know if you know or not, but I'm the one that sits upstairs that if, if a house goes vacant for so long, the people's never going to fix it. We just had a recently, this Sunday, we had a house over on Wilson Street that, that had been condemned and they was going to fix it. And I got over there Sunday afternoon and the flames was about 50, 60 foot up in the air. And I said, well, you've already had a fire here one time on this outbuilding there. And I'm going ahead and condemn this piece of property. You can get with Mr. Harbison that he'll give you time to, they won't be there tomorrow, but you'll have time with him, just get with him. If you've got your building permit, if you get the outside done like he wants it to, he probably, what we did, but I'm going to go ahead and condemn this piece, move to abate this piece of property. So that way, you'll get started on it and you'll know with him, he'll tell you exactly what kind of timeframe you have. I mean, because we just can't let these buildings, houses stay vacant like they are and let all the trash grow up. I know that the garbage has been everywhere at that piece of property.
It's not now.
Yeah. But it has been. I get, I get calls every single day about it and just, you know, we just got to, we got to do better. So I'm going to abate the nuisance and you can get with him after this and talk to him about it.
I would second it, but I'd like to ask Brian, state of Alabama, the subject to the rights of redemption, back.
That means income, that means state taxes.
It's been taken over, right? State of Alabama actually owns it, right? I don't know where it makes the difference.
Ma'am, have you paid your taxes on your house?
What's the name?
The taxes have they been?
What's the name?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. If you're not careful, the state of Alabama, somebody can came, come in there after so long and, and take that property over, you know.
Well, I think they've already got it.
Let me see this, too.
I got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. That'd be the first place I'd go to, up to Edwell County and get the tax thing straight because they don't give you but three years, I think it is. I make a-
We did.
They did.
And I second it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ms., I'm sorry, Madam President, may I ask one thing?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Ms. Mansel, I would also just encourage you to reach out to the Community Development Office here at Gadsden. If you're actually occupying that home and it's livable and you own it, you may be eligible for some grant money to help do some improvements to it if you, if you're living in it and you own it. So if you can do the work to get back in there and get it up to code, then maybe you have an opportunity to get some, some federal grant money through the city to help, help do some improvements.
But Jason, once we condemn it, they can't do anything to the property. Is that not correct?
Well, to qualify for CDBG funds, the house has to be occupied by the owner and they do have to qualify for those loans. That's how that works.
But once we condemn a house, can they work on the house? That's, that's my question.
Legally, no, without the court.
That's what I thought. She, at this point in time, she, she legally does not own this house at this point in time. State of Alabama does. That would have to be cleared up. But, you know, like I said, I get a lot of calls on this. And I just feel this is the right thing we should do on this piece of property.
Our final hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 2213 Norris Avenue in District Six. Martha Burrows, subject to a mortgage in favor of Charles Brown being the last known owners. Is there anyone speaking in opposition?
My name is Martha Burrow. I live at 510 Hill Avenue in Glencoe right now. I would like to move back into my property at 2213 Norris Avenue. It has been condemned, but it has been upgraded by the city, of more value now since we have done the repairs on the house. And my son and I that will be living in the house are both disabled and we are trying to qualify it against the inside up to what Mr. Harbison said it needed to be. So we are still working on it. He told us we could take our time working on the inside, but we couldn't live in it until it was done on the inside. But I have done what he, what, what the house was condemned for. I have improved it and the city improved the value of the property, too.
Ma'am, who's living in the house now?
We're not living in it because when they condemned it, they told us we had to move out. But we would like to move back into it.
Yes, ma'am. I might go argue a point with you here about this piece of property, but someone's living there at night in that house. There's running-
No, my son stays in it in the daytime when him and his son are working in it. But they don't live in it at night.
Okay. Are they still running stitching cord from another piece of property to get power in there?
I don't know about that now.
Okay, and the water, too?
Huh?
And water also?
No, we do not run anything with, to get water. I mean, it has got an extension cord that I don't know about. But I do know we would like to move back in. We have done all the improvements that Mr. Harbison condemned the property for. And we're still trying to do what he said we had to do on the inside. So, but we do stay, he stays in there in the daytime. So, and we have to have power to, if he's got an extension cord, we have to have power to install lumber and such as that. But we're both disabled and we're working on a very limited budget.
Yes, ma'am.
So what do I do now?
We have to hear from Mr. Harbison right now.
All right, Mr. Harbison.
Madam President, we filed this case in December of 2015. This December, before years, there have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in December of 2018. I personally encountered two adults sitting on the bed yesterday who were not associated with the family, said they were just hanging out. This has been an ongoing problem for years. I'm asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
You going to tear my house down, Mr. Harbison?
I've done everything you asked me to do.
Sometimes we sit up here and this is a really hard decision to make sometimes. And sometimes you think, well, what's the right decision to make? And you just sit here and you think, I seen the house burn, that the flames was 50, 60 foot above the house Sunday. Someone could have been in there and someone could have been killed in that house or died in that situation right there. And I'm afraid, like Mr. Harbison said, he caught two people in there yesterday that was just hanging out. And this could happen right here. And this permit's been going on for four years. And Mr. Harbison says that it still hadn't been brought up to code in four years. So-
Brought up to code?
I make a recommendation- Let me, can I ask a question to Mr. Harbison first? Well, the outside, what's-
The house has been improved. The city improved value of the house, too. Now why is he saying it's not been improved?
Ma'am, I want to ask them a question. On the outside, I'm looking at the picture. Is it, is it the, is it the building or the stuff that's outside?
It's, it's basically the structure itself, the interior, the floor system, the foundation system. They're keeping the grass cut. As you can tell, the backyard is just being used to store salvageable materials. There's a, appears to be an abandoned vehicle back there with a discarded water heater that didn't come from this property. This has been an ongoing problem.
I might add, too, also, that I think it's probably four or five months ago, we had to have some people go out there. There was a fire out in the backyard. Somebody was burning copper or burning something out in there. And we, police, not a policeman, the city employee was called and they were not there and had to stop that. And there's no garbage service there. There's no utilities cut on whatsoever. So if there's anybody there, and they had to go to the restroom, there's no restroom for them to go in. And there's no telling what, you know, Mr. Harbison's been in the house. I hadn't been in it, but I'm telling you what the inside probably looks like. There's just people going, staying in there.
They're not staying there. They've been working on the house.
What is-
In the daytime.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
You going to burn the house down, sir? Is that what that means? You're out of order. Excuse me, but I'm, I'm just wanting to know, does that make y'all go tear my house down?
Yes, ma'am. That's what it means. If there's by chance that you were able to do all of the improvements that would, would bring it up to a livable standard in a short amount of time, that might be possible to prevent that. But otherwise, if, if, if all of those substantial improvements aren't completed, at some point, the city would tear the house down.
Mr. Harbison, can you give me what needs to be approved?
All right, sir. I don't know why he'd come down my house in the first place, but he did.
Ms. President, I ask we continue, please, for the meeting.
We're next, the, the next item is awarding a bid for 3418 for the 2019 Community Development Street Resurfacing. The city engineer recommended awarding the bid to McCarthy Construction Company, Inc., and the amount is $1,022,979. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
It's on move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to clarify that, that when we talk about repaving roads in this city and people talk about the state of our roads, this is just one example. This is $1,022,979 that we're awarding to pave roads in all seven districts. Obviously, we can't pave them all at one time. There's a lot of roads in Gadsden. But this is just one example of the Gadsden spending, uh, the City of Gadsden spending over a million dollars to continue to help pave roads and bring them up to speed. So we, we are addressing those issues.
Clerk, did I call for a vote? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next resolution is authorized easement to Alabama Power Company. And this is to allow utility installation for the new fire cemetery maintenance facility located at 1521 Chestnut Street. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
It's on move.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing amendment to agreement with Milliman, Inc., and this makes minor wording change to the agreement for reoccurring biannual actual other post employment benefits valuation reports and the amount is $11,000 per year. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items number 18 through 21 on the agenda are resolutions approving agreement for the city sponsorship of fishing tournaments to be held at the Gaston Couche-Landing as following. The Alabama Bass Nationing, May the 9th, 2020, the amount is $4,500. The Alabama Bass Trail, April the 18th, 2020, $7,500. American Bass Angler, Inc., May the 2nd and 3rd, 2020, $2,000. And the Bass Federation, Inc., April the 5th, 2020, $2,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
For the first reading, there's an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020 year on budget and this is to reflect receipt of an Edward Bird Memorial Justice Assisted Grant in the amount of $36,986. And this will be used to purchase equipment for the Gaston Police Department Bomb Squad. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Our next item is new business and the new business, I ask for unanimous consent for the authorization agreement for the YMCA for services in the amount of $4,000 per month.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for the adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, department reports, committees, boards, citizen requests, Joseph Cole.
Good morning. Several weeks ago, I went to pre-council meeting to request street life for some constituents in District Three. On last Tuesday and Wednesday, I received some calls from the constituents in this district and two of those were 97-year-old twins to inform me that they had life and thank you. I said, well, the thanks do not go to me. I said, what you need to do is to thank Councilman Worley and Councilor Wilson. So they told me, so they always watch the council chambers. They said, would you call and tell the council members that we said thank you? I told them I didn't believe any council members was taking my calls at the time, but I would come to the council chambers and formally thank Councilor Worley and also Councilor Wilson. It has made a big difference and they really see this, so I want to thank both of you for the work that you've done on this. And I would like to offer suggestion to the council, although you may not take it. It would be good if you videotape and broadcast your pre-council meetings because many citizens in this city thinks that all you do is tear down houses. But if they got a chance to see the work that goes on in pre-council, they would see there are number of things that go on that they don't know anything about. And there are some jurisdictions that do show the pre-council meeting as well as the council meeting. Secondly, there had been a question, some citizens have concern over the community center or recreational center that is being built in East Gaston. They said it's been two or three years and nothing has transpired on there. I know the venue has been up, we've had parks, but I would like today, when you give your summation, the council president or some staff member, give a status to the citizens on what's the deal about the community center over in East Gaston. And also, I want you to address the issue. I know when the city takes bids, do you take the lowest bid or is it the lowest responsible bid? I thought by law it's the lowest responsible bid, but I could be incorrect. It appears though the contractor who got this bid was not responsible because it should not be taking this loan. And I don't know what the issues or what have transpired, but maybe during your summation today, someone can let the citizen know what is going on and what's the status of the community center this time. Thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to speak.
Madam President, I'd just like to point out that the time does not roll over for Mr. Cole since he finished early. He doesn't get to use that next time. He's still five minutes.
Remarks by the council, mayor?
I got a remark on that. You do have to take the lowest bid, that's law, the lowest bidder. We were not of the opinion that he could do the work. His attorney was suing us, so that's the main part of the problem, but I can refer to the city attorney to bring us up to date on what's happened, or maybe.
That's before anybody else speak. That was one of the assignments that was given the attorney to speak on the community center or whatever facilities that he was talking about. So the rest of us have nothing to say concerning that.
You're right, it is the lowest responsible bidder. And in this case, we have an architect, which is also a third party, and he pre-approved all the bidders on this project. So they were qualified bidders according to the architect, who is a professional. We've had, and I can't get into detail unfortunately, but we've had some issues and the bonding company has stepped in. And we are at the very end of negotiating with the bonding company. We're dotting our i's and crossing our t's and we're hoping to, hopefully in the very near future, they will start seeing some work done out there, finish up the project.
Councilman Worley?
You know, it shouldn't take Mr. Cole to come all the way from Atlanta to ask us about that project. We should have been able to put that little information there out a long time ago because we've all gotten calls. You know, when people call me, I tell them the reason why. But we should have been able to at least put that little bit of information out there to give the public and to let them know that we were still, that the building would be complete.
Well, that happened, that happened at four, about four o'clock yesterday.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm not talking about that right there. You know, but we've been, it's been a process, you know. So, but anyway, I'm gonna go on. Yeah, yeah, and he didn't want us to say anything. So that's why, because there's a lot of different stuff, that's why we hadn't really said anything publicly. And we appreciate the attorney. I ain't getting on yet. We appreciate you.
And Mr. Cole didn't have to come over here to ask that question because that question has been answered. You already know that. That question has been answered. We've been given instructions as to what to do. So Mr. Cole came over here on his own free will or because somebody else told him to come.
Somebody asked him. That's because the people don't know. The people don't, they don't know, that's all. They just want to know. That's all I was saying.
All they have to do is come to the council meetings and they can find out a lot of information.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Let me be very clear. This mayor and this council have been chomping at the bit to inform the public. And it is, and because of the situation we're in and because I'm trying to get this thing worked out rather than go south, I have instructed all the council people and the mayor to be mugged. They're not happy with me, but it's, but that's been my legal advice to them. And as of, yesterday, we had some big movement and it's just kind of strange that you shut it today talking about it, so.
I got an announcement to make. First Saturday at Calver Square, this November the 2nd, it's gonna be First Responders Appreciation Event, so they're asking for you to come, all the first responders, first Saturday, opportunity to just say thank you. It will be Saturday, November the 2nd, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Calver Square. And I want to say congratulations to our school system with the report cards from the state came out and all our schools are improved. So I want to say not only thank you to our superintendent, who is working very hard diligently to bring up our grades, I want to say thank you to all their principals, teachers, the support staff and administrators for a job well done. And I know they resting on their laurels, they're gonna continue to improve and they want the scores to go up. The superintendent said that this morning at our pre-council meeting. He wanted them to go even higher. So I think the lowest score was a C. So I'm really, really proud of the school system. Some people may want to talk negatively about our school system and try to bring our school system down, but the school system is gonna be here regardless. Whether we support them or not, it's gonna be here and I'm gonna support them long as I'm in this office and even out of this office, I'm gonna continue to support the school system. So I want to say again, thank you to all of the workers, the entire staff of the Gaston Board Education, also the board, the newly elected board members. I want to say thank you to them also. Thank you.
Councilman Beck?
Yes, ma'am. I was at an awards ceremony, a banquet last week hosted by the Alabama Department of Realization Services. And I would just like to bring back some information and really pat the city on the back for a lot of the things that the city does that maybe a lot of people don't know. You've probably all heard of the beautiful Rainbow Cafe that's located in the Gaston Public Library. It is a huge success story. In fact, in recent months, it's becoming a regional and even a national success story. And it's due in large part, of course, to the Gaston City School System. It's kind of been the vision and the brainchild of Chip Rowan, who is the, kind of the director of that program. But the City of Gaston plays a large part in that. Mayor has stepped up and the Gaston Public Library is where this cafe is hosted and we do a great job there. In addition to that, 20 students that have graduated from that program have now gained employment locally here in Gaston. That means that they're paying taxes, they're working at local businesses. It's kind of an unheard of type phenomena and it's due in large part again to Chip Rowan, to the Board of Education and to the City of Gaston. It's a great picture of everybody working together. City of Gaston helps transport some of these students to their jobs. I don't, you know, I've been on the council 11 months. I didn't know that. I'm assuming a lot of people in Gaston don't know that. There's a lot of things that the city does very quietly that's really good things that go on in the city. So I want to applaud the city, I want to applaud the mayor for approving those type of things. I'm sure Shane was involved and there's just a lot of positive things going on. It's changing lives. Want to move to the fishing ordinances that we passed today and again congratulate Jen Weddington and her staff. You know, we sit up here and we pass these ordinances and not a lot said. Those are really big deals. Those are situations where a lot of people are gonna come to our city, they're gonna spend money, they're gonna utilize this river out here that was a gift from the Lord that that Gaston has. And there's a lot of work that goes into those tournaments and we're bringing in a lot of high school kids and things like that. So my hats off to the Parks and Rec Office. I want to echo Councilman Worley's comments on our school system. They had great improvement and, you know, we need to always stay behind our school system because that's our future, that's our children. And my hats off to the whole group that is working hard, the principals, the teachers, the parents and the students to turn that thing around and to head in the right direction. You know, y'all, this is an interesting time in our nation's history. We are in a process, I think that's, when we look back on it in years to come, it's kind of like the Industrial Revolution or even back in the times when our nation went from horse and buggy days to automobiles. There is a large shift in the workforce. I read recently 82% of manufacturing jobs in the last 10 years have evaporated. They have gone away. They've been replaced by automation. They've been replaced by robotics and by robots. So things are changing, not only in Gaston, they're changing all over the world. Cities and communities that adapt to that change and embrace that change will be successful. Cities and communities that don't do that won't be successful. I think that we're embracing that and I think that we're moving forward in those kind of directions. So you can't fix this in a council meeting and you can't fix this in a year's time. This is a process. So know that your city leaders are involved in that process, we're thinking this through, we're doing our research and we're adapting. Last thing I want to bring up is Mr. Harbison. There's a set of state laws and then there's a set of city ordinances and codes that Mr. Harbison has to obey. And so he doesn't do anything other than he obeys the laws and the rules that are already set in place. I know oftentimes it may not sound and seem fair, but he's not the person that has allowed houses to get into the condition that they're in. He's the person that has to deal with it once it gets to that place. So we just have to obey the rules and we have to obey the laws and we have to enforce those laws and those rules. Everybody gets a fair chance to right their ship and to make their house wherever it needs to be. I would encourage you to think it this way. He's got about 27 years in looking at houses and doing things. A lot of times, people put money into a house that is just not a good idea. I know you have to, we make decisions based on laws and rules. You're making an emotional decision because it's a family home place. I understand that. I actually live in a family home place myself, so I understand those ramifications. But from a business standpoint, sometimes it's best to maybe get advice to make sure you're not putting good money after bad. And Brian has to look at that sometimes and he has to obey by the rules. Brian, I would ask that if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Mansell, I saw you say that you didn't understand what we just did. Brian, if you would take a few minutes and just explain to her what just happened because she doesn't understand. So somebody needs to, somebody needs to tell her. And so if you'll, Ms. Mansell, if you'll get with Mr. Harbison, he can explain it to you. We don't, we're not up here trying to make people's lives unhappy. We are elected by the citizens to enforce the laws and the rules that are on the books and so that's what we do. And Mr. Harbison does a good job at what he does. Sometimes it's not what individuals want to hear, but it's the law and it's the rules and it's the right thing. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
I also want to give a big pat on the back to Superintendent Reddick for the school results. That was really encouraging and something that wasn't a surprise. We were all expecting that and it was great to see it come to fruition. I also want to give a big pat on the back to the Gaston City Titans Football Team pulling out their first victory this past week. That's a real lesson in determination and overcoming and persevering and sticking with it and I'm proud of those men for what they're doing. As far as the holiday season coming up, I want to tell all you guys about, encourage you if you've never made it out to a Halloween on Turrantine Avenue. It is really a special occasion. I got an interesting call the other day, someone asking me if I still lived in the district and I'm not really sure how I would work a full-time job in downtown and be a city councilman and not live in the City of Gaston. I'm here seven days a week just about, but this is a great opportunity for you to see that I live in the City of Gaston. I live on Turrantine Avenue, 525 Turrantine. Come on by on Halloween, I'll be there. Love to see you. be there, love to see you. Don't come by any other time, but, you want to, but come by on Halloween, I'd love to see you, I'd love to hang out with you. My mother-in-law does live with me, though, and if you park on the grass, she's gonna yell at you, just know that before you get there, but seriously, we'll have a great time on Turrentine, it's a great time to bring your kids out, there'll be dozens and dozens of homes handing out candy, it's really a wonderful time, so I hope all of you can come out and be a part of that. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon.
I'd just like to ask Councilman Wilson, before I drive all the way from Alabama City to his address at five-twenty-five, is he gonna give out candy bars or little penny candy?
We give out the good candy on Turrentine.
Okay, that's what, I mean, it's your house, I'll make sure I get a candy bar if I come. I do want to say, it is a hard decision setting up here, when you hear all these houses and we see these people come, and we try to do the right thing, and we try to do the right thing for the whole neighborhood, and, you know, we just, sometimes where our hands are tied, Mr. Harbison's been doing this for years, I have utmost respect for him, he knows what he's doing. You know, it's some kind of, sometimes we have to make tough decisions, and, you know, I had to make two tough decisions today, but, you know, it just had to be done. And sometimes, I know none of us wants to push houses down, but we don't want to see people get killed either, when people go in and burn these houses, staying in there at night, trying to find a place to live or stay warm or out of the rain, we don't want to do that, but, you know, we know that, I've had three people that's died in houses, and I've had a number of houses over there that's burnt, that didn't have the power and the water and all that stuff on it, and people just now, homeless folks, or people that just wants to go hang out somewhere, just hang out in an old abandoned house. You know, they, you know, they kind of take it over and just hang out in there. So, all I'm gonna say about that, I want to say that in Alabama City, last Thursday, we had between three and five thousand people, we cooked roughly twenty-six hundred hot dogs, I think it was, we had a tremendous turnout, everybody enjoyed themselves, we had zero problems, thank the police department, Public Works, all the people that was there that joined in giving out the candy, the face painting, the popcorn, the hot dog cruise, I could never go ahead and name everybody that helped at that down there, but I just want to tell you, I appreciate you, you know who you are, and I appreciate everything you're doing. At Walnut Park Baptist Church on Wilson Street, Thursday night, they will be having a Halloween trick-or-treat party, starts at five-thirty, the costume contest starts at five-thirty, and the candy and the game start at six, that's three-oh-two Wilson Street in Walnut Park. Thank you.
Councilman Reed.
Yeah, I want to say that on November the sixth, the Patriots Association locally will be inducting six people into the Hall of Honor, and I just noticed this morning that one of them is here, John Reed, and I wanted to recognize him. John is gonna be inducted on two things, military service and his long civic accomplishments. And for me and the board, congratulations, John. Thank you. And before everybody starts calling me from my district, I'm having a little trouble talking this morning, CDBG money is different from city paving money, so when you see that list on CDBG, that's not all of it. The city's money is on the other side, and that's when you'll be listed. So, if you're not on that CDBG list, look for it on the other side.
Mayor, you had to come.
Yes, going back to the school, the grades, all that is great, we're proud of them, but it's sort of some misinformation out there, like sometimes the mayor and the city or whatever, we don't support the school. We came in office, most of us, in oh-six, and since that time, we've put between thirty and thirty-three million dollar in projects, and taken over payments, and three and a half million for the Career Tech Building, and many, many other things that people don't know about. So, I would say that is supporting the school a lot, and we're all for it.
I'd like to make an announcement, the FOP, the First Responders, Fire Police Department, they're having a trunk-or-treat Thursday out at the Amphitheater, starts at five o'clock, and they're inviting all the children to come, and in keeping with that, we know that the Halloween is a fun time for the children, but there's also people out there that are mean. Human trafficking is real, and if you don't believe it, just read in the papers, and I learned a long time ago that our I-59, I-20 is the thoroughfare for human trafficking, especially for young girls and children, and we see what happened last week. So, I've just challenged parents, and especially the young, the young parents, stay close to your children, just don't send them out. We've got a habit of sending them or ta, dropping them off, but be safe this time. There's a lot of places and a lot of things that are having them for our children, so take your children there, don't drop them off, but take them there, but just know that human trafficking is real, and it can happen right here in the city, so I just ask all of you to be safe. Yes?
When, I wondered if we could announce or put on ninety-nine what you can throw outside your house for this debris, because right now, on Tenth Street, somebody's cleaned out two different houses, it seemed like, and strolled stuff all up and down Tenth Street, from Avenue A to Avenue L, and they will do an investigation, nuisance and abatement, we'll do an investigation, try to find out who threw the stuff out, and then we will charge you. So, to the people in that area, it's gonna take time for Public Works to come out and pick it up, because we're gonna have to do an investigation, try to find out who put the trash out there, and I don't know, it may take ten, ten days or fourteen days, I forgot the exact amount of days it would take, but, before we pick it up, but I was wondering if we could put that on channel ninety-nine so these people can understand it. Mostly, it's the rental houses, and I think we'll, when we change the ordinance, we'll go to the, we'll go after the owner of the homes, so, but we need the people to understand, you kids just cannot throw everything out at one time, put a little bit out at a time, and we will be more than happy to pick it up. Thank you.
I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.